All right, public board, this is regular meeting of the Lennox Township Board of Trustees, August 12th, 2024, at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval meeting agenda.
We will be adding the following fire department items: 12 individual thermal imaging cameras, thermal imaging camera, a piercing nozzle, 12 or 15 firefighter alerting pagers, and rescue airbags.
So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for August 12th, 2024, adding the following fire department items: Item O being 12 individual thermal imaging cameras, Item P being thermal imaging camera, Item Q being a piercing nozzle, Item R being 17 firefighter alerting pagers, and Item S being a rescue airbag system.
Second.
I have motion by the Chair, seconded by Treasurer Hahnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Here and none, the motion passes. Approval minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of June 3rd and the special board meeting of June 24th as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Hahnold, seconded by Trustee Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Here and none, the motion passes. Public announcements. All right, public announcements, last call. All right, moving on to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak would just ask to go up to microphone. We would just say there's a three-minute time limit.
In regards to what issue?
Any. It's public comment. You have three minutes to your...
I don't have to state anything specific.
If you can, just take your name and address.
My name's Nicole Nance Wiki, 638823, Mobra. As a resident of Lennox Township, I support the proposed ORB ordinance. As an owner of side-by-sides, we thoroughly enjoy taking our families out on rides and enjoying the scenery of our township. It provides quality bonding time with our family. In the fall, we love to ride around, scout, look out for deer that could be potential, you know, on our property. We prefer to use our hunting during hunting, we prefer to use our side-by-side during hunting season between different hunting properties instead of our main vehicles. We have a small hobby farm and it's easier and more practical to use our side-by-sides when we transport items to and from our house to make houses. I believe with the correct protocols and safety measures being placed, to drive ORBs in our township would benefit many residents.
Public comment?
I agree with the aforementioned statements and also think it's a good thing for younger drivers or foreigner to learn to drive supervised with their parents or guardians. It gives them an opportunity to kind of learn how to drive before they actually go and learn how to drive. We utilize our side-by-side to transport, same thing, hunting properties, seed implements, according to what St. Clair County has done, they haven't really had any incidents, so I don't think there's any reason why not that we should not be able to utilize their ATV's on the local roads, not the M-roads, I understand, but that's all I got to say.
If you don't mind, can you state your name and this?
Oh, I'm sorry. On Colwin-Henshaw, 30150, 30 Mile Road.
Thank you. Public comment?
Monique Savalski, 58073, Place Road. Same thing, we are in support of the ORB ordinance. We have hobby farmers and farmers alike who use their machines to transport and work together. We have children that we go for rides as families and they learn valuable skills by experiencing things firsthand. If we put this ordinance into effect, it'll allow safer and regulated rules for the machines that are already being used within the township. Thank you.
Public, any further public comment?
Good evening, everybody. Eric Sutton, 58783, Place Road, Lennox Township. So I am also here on behalf of the ORB proposal. I've lived at the same spot at 27 and Place over by Wetzel for my entire life and, you know, ever since I was a kid, we would always ride to go-karts and four-wheelers and as long as we weren't being reckless and we had helmets, you know, the police were cool, they would talk to us and, you know, if we were just going from property to property. And, you know, I get the concerns that people may have about speeding and it being dangerous and unfortunately, the people who want this and are going to follow the laws and the ordinance, you know, those aren't the people doing donuts on the road and tearing it up. So on the way here, we passed a four-wheeler tearing down the road. You know, it's so many people are doing it and living by Wetzel, we have a heavy DNR presence. So my property, for instance, has a driveway off Place at 27. So for me to hit from one to the other without tearing down my backyard, I like to drive my stuff around to the other access and I got ticketed four years ago, so now I only drive my street legal vehicles because I don't have the pleasure of getting to the backside of my property. So I think, you know, if the ordinance is, the way it's written is pretty clear, lots of surrounding counties have something similar. I fully support that, but I think for, you know, what we're trying to do, it would be beneficial and give us where St. Clair County and other places already are. Appreciate your time.
Any further public comment?
Tim Schramm, 31690, 20 Mile Road. All the rules and regulations are already in effect. Up north, anywhere you go, the NR has all the rules, 25 miles an hour speed limit. The city of New Baltimore has even opened it up to the residents in New Baltimore downtown for that also now. So there's no reason that it shouldn't be open here. There wouldn't have to be any new laws or anything in effect because it's all stated in the ORB manuals as it is. You know, you gotta be, take your ORB classes, you know, if her is 14 and over, you gotta be at the guardian and all that stuff, so it wouldn't change anything. There would not have to be any new laws or rules put in effect because they're already stated everywhere else. Thank you.
Hello, Mike Pristatic, 8855, Place Road, Lennox. I support the ordinance. I've lived in the township about 10 years now. I use ORBs to assist my elderly neighbors, visit, look for lost dogs. I do agree, you know, and I do work in other communities, including the city of Detroit. There are problem people, but these are not the people that we're going to address with the ordinance. They're people that follow rules, help each other, that I see in the township, so I support the ordinance. Thank you.
Public comment? Any further public comment? All right, Joe Lomond, setting one up, anyone else? All right, we'll be moving on. All right, consent agenda. All items listed on this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public service requests it at a prior to the meeting, in which the Chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under your agenda item number eight below. Approval, the consent agenda shall be invited majority, roll, call those present and voting.
For orders and bills, we have $930,988.25 to be approved at this time.
Can you repeat the number again? How much?
It's on the back of the bills list, too.
I make a motion that we approve the orders and bills in the amount of $930,988.25.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Gurley, seconded by Treasurer Hahnold. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Gurley? Aye. Hahnold? Aye. Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, item 10, new business, Macomb County Sheriff Department Law Enforcement Agreement, Mr. White. I believe we also have some representatives from the Sheriff's Office tonight?
Yeah, I can kind of outline this year's plan and the current proposal for the three-year agreement. For the purpose of the audience, some of this will be, might be information to them for the board, I think they'll be aware of most of what I'm going to mention tonight. Currently, Lennox Township obtains our law enforcement service from the Macomb County Sheriff's Department. They do an exceptional job for our community. We have, from a public safety standpoint, from Fire EMS, we have an exceptional working relationship with our brothers in Brown right here from the County Sheriff's Department. And so we're certainly glad to have them here in the community. Previous to tonight, and this would actually go into effect January 1st, but previous to the current contract, we have basically one sheriff's deputy 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have a second sworn sheriff's deputy who also has the ability to do motor carrier enforcement, who's here 40 hours a week. So basically, we have a total of three and three-quarters deputies, if you really want to look at it that way, in the township. I can tell you from a public safety standpoint that the busiest time of day for our Fire EMS, and I suspect the Sheriff's Department, I don't want to speak for them, but they're on most of the calls with us or we're on the calls with them, is from about 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. And so it's nice to have the two deputies most of the time during the day, but on the afternoon shift, there are, you know, there's only one deputy here. And there is a lot more situations these days when more than one deputy is necessary to make certain the scene is kept safe for not only the other first responders, but our residents as well. With this year's proposed agreement, and we reviewed this with the board at budget time, so there's nothing really here that was, that was new from the budget workshop discussions. From, we would go from the current complement of the three full-time deputies and the one motor carrier officer, to having a total of seven deputies available in the community. There would be two on afternoons, two on days, there'd be still one on midnights, but occasionally two. And basically what happens with that is, right now, when Jake, our motor carrier enforcement works days, as the township board's aware, on weekends, on weekends and when he, on vacation or at training, there's nobody backfilling him. So by having this number of old deputies, we would have deputies always backfilling for Jake when he's not here, it might not be a motor carrier enforcement, but they'll make sure there's that two-person complement. Again, two on afternoons and one is scheduled for midnights, but in order to have somebody for backfill, there will be some times that we'll actually have two people on midnights. So when the person's not backfilling for Jake, it's likely they'll be on the midnight shift. So it just, it'll make our community far, far safer. The cost for the sheriff's deputies is for 2025 is $1,333,376. That includes three vehicles for the deputies to utilize. It goes up basically by about a cost of living percentage for each of the next three years. In this first year, because sheriff's contracts begin in January, the amount we had in the budget was about 1.25 million because, well, for the first six months of our fiscal year, which runs from January to July, will still be on the current system, which is at about $970,000 and change. So that is what we proposed during the budget workshop. I have Commander Avro here this evening, as well as Lieutenant McPherson from the Sheriff's Department. I don't know if either one of them would like to comment at all this evening or if I inadvertently misrepresented anything.
Well, good evening, Commander Avro here with the Sheriff's Office. As you know, I just want to, first of all, we're going from brown to black, so in two years, we're switching over just because they're not making the brown anymore, so you'll see us in black here shortly. What I want to say is, for the board and for the community here, you know, as far as I remember, we've had a great relationship with the township, as far as I remember, since the early 2000s, and I want to continue that partnership here with you today. Like Mr. White stated, it is becoming an also safety issue for us. It is, when you do have one officer that's on the afternoon shift and one officer that's on the midnight shift, and if there is an arrest and they're going down to the county jail, that the township is left with no patrol. So as a law enforcement professional, I do believe that this is a, that this is going in the right direction. And I also want the board and the community to know that when you contract with the Sheriff's Office, the services you get is our Sheriff's Enforcement Team, which is our drug team, our evidence technicians, if there is a crime repair where it requires our evidence technicians to respond to the area, that all comes part of the contract. We have a polygraph operator and fire investigations. If there's a fatality or if there's a crash, we send out our fire investigations unit, our youth services, computer enforcement teams, our SWAT team, crisis negotiators, K-9 units when needed, our drone teams, dive team, our mobile field force, and we also have 200 reserve officers. So all that comes, that when you contract one deputy or the seven that we're proposing here tonight, all that comes as a package. So as a professional here in the law enforcement community, I do believe that this is definitely needed, adding the positions, and I'll take any questions if you have.
Thank you for having me. I think, I think one of the things that really, when we started looking at this this year, we had numerous meetings with Lieutenant McPherson, who really is one of our unsung heroes. We don't see him as often as one of our deputies here in the township, but we are blessed that, you know, he was kind of assigned here at about the same time I was, made the public safety director here. And it's really opened this incredible line of communication between, you know, our office and the Macomb County Sheriff's Office, and I just want to thank him while he's here tonight for all he does. And one of those things he's able to do is provide the information and data that I can provide back to the board, and we were working on workshop information. I was actually stunned because I provided the board a document that showed that 7.4 times a day, 7.4 times a day in a 24-hour period, our deputy, that's our single deputy that's on duty is needing backup at the incident in our community, and our community is only growing. And so that, to me, was the, if you want to call it selling point for why we need this. I also think it might be appropriate, Mr. Supervisor, to explain, because we've got a great crowd here tonight in the gallery, that they don't pay, if we do this tonight, it doesn't increase their taxes, which is something people are always understandably concerned about. That money comes through, as I understand it, the township's tipping fees that come out of our landfill, and that's how that is paid for. So adding police only makes all of our residents safer, doesn't cost the township, or more importantly, doesn't cost the residents any more money for that. There's no other questions? My recommendation is to approve the three-year agreement with the Macomb County Sheriff's Department for Law Enforcement Services.
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion to approve the Macomb County Sheriff's Department Agreement for Law Enforcement Services, beginning January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2027, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, seconded by Treasurer Clifford. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item B. Thank you Commander Avro and Lieutenant McPherson for coming out. All right, item B, Fire Department Station Number Two Door Replacement Proposal, Mr. White?
Yes, so this one is fairly simple on our station number two, which is a building that is now well over 20 years old, I think. The back door of the building basically is metal and it's started to rust out to the point that it simply needs replacement. The cost for that through Citywide Door Company is $2,950, and we recommend the replacement of the door on the back of Fire Station Number Two on 32 Mile Road.
Do you have, how much was this costing?
$2,950. Basically, they have to take the whole metal, metal frame out of the door, it's all break back there, they have to pull that all out, put it in metal, so these days, nothing's cheap.
I will make a motion to approve the, for example, the code from Citywide Door Company to replace the rear entry door at Fire Station Number Two for the total amount of $2,950.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Hahnold, seconded by Trustee Gurley. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Hahnold?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, I didn't see Fire Department Training Room renovation.
So our, our Fire Station, kind of our beloved Fire Station on Grashen Avenue, it always looked so nice from the road. Folks don't remember, it was actually built in 1989. It's a, it's an old building now by building standards. And the training room area needs some renovations. The cabinets are, you know, 30-plus years old, there's, we have some needs for additional storage that we don't currently have, and some additional countertops for training. And so we are proposing a renovation to just the training room area, not the whole, not the whole building. And we got a bid for, on, for $20,980. I'm going to recommend from the podium tonight that we make the motion to not exceed $22,980. I've learned that anytime you're doing a renovation, little things come up, and I don't want to delay the project over, you know, something that we have to do a field change on, if you will, while that's ongoing. So while the bid is $20,980, I'm just recommending that the board approve it not to exceed $22,980 so we don't have to come forward if there is some issue that we learn during renovation.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Department Training Room renovations through Specialty Cabinet Manufacturing Incorporated for a cause not to exceed $22,980.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, seconded by Clerk Lawson. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item D, HVAC Maintenance Contract Agreement, Mr. Trumbly?
Good evening. As most of you are aware, we've used Johnson Controls for heating and cooling needs in this building since it was built. This maintenance agreement, we've had into effect for many, many years. This is just the annual renewal of the three-year agreement that we've had in place. It did go up slightly this time around. First year, it starts out at $6,740.80 for the first year with a small increase on year two and three. As far as the service goes, the service remains the same. As far as the annual visits, twice a year, they go through every unit, which I believe we have 12 different units here, which also gives us priority service when we do have a failure.
I will make a motion to approve Johnson Controls Plan Service Agreement for three years, beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2027, at the cost of $6,740 for year one, $7,210 for year two, and $7,720 for year three, as presented by DPW Superintendent Trumbly.
Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Lawson, seconded by Treasurer Hahnold. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Lawson?
Aye.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, item D, Basement Repair Waterproofing.
Okay, this is an issue that's been on and off for some years now, where we've had water infiltrating into the basement in certain areas. The really strange thing is, it only happens during certain rain vents where we have water coming in, and unfortunately, where it's coming in at is our IT room, which is probably the worst possible place that we need water. The equipment in there is quite vulnerable as well as expensive. So I did contact four different companies to come out, they, all three of them, I'm sorry, all four of them did a site inspection. Three of them decided to bid, one decided to decline because they felt it was kind of outside their scope. The three that did bid, it was kind of unique, each of them had a different approach to the problem. I did make a recommendation because of their experience, their guarantees, and what their scope of work was to correct this problem. So at this time, I would recommend Bee Dry Systems of Michigan in the amount of $6,240.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Bee Dry Systems of Southwest Michigan Incorporated to repair and waterproof the basement walls at the cost of $6,240, as proposed by Superintendent Trumbly.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Gurley, seconded by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, item F, Frag Mities Program Expansion Proposal, Mr. Freibau?
Good evening, Board. This evening, we are coming back from the Supervisor's Office requesting an updated change. We were in front of the board last month requesting up to $10,000 for a Frag Mities program. As many of you know, the Frag Mities are completely out of control throughout the township. We've looked at that, we've got an entire survey that came back from First Rivers for Six Rivers, excuse me. The recommendation that came back, we went back and forth, and I believe Amanda's here this evening. Sorry, can't see the sun. So if there's any additional questions on Amanda's side, I'd be more than happy to bring her up. But as the survey went through, it came back to the township, we reviewed it, found out that the original survey involved Grashen, which had actually set us up inwards of $42,000. We were able to remove Grashen because that is a state mandated road. But as you look at the maps that are attached to your packets, these maps show you that But as you look at the maps that are attached to your packets, these maps show you that we've got Frag Mities everywhere in the township. Lenox Township has not been part of this program in the past. It's recommended that we actually become involved. And after restructuring the Lenox footage for the township, we've been able to reduce the cost of the entire program to approximately $24,000, with the township having a 50% split, and Six Rivers is involved in the other 50% split. Now uniquely, just so you understand, once the Frag Mities are treated, this doesn't go away automatically. It takes about two to three weeks, from my understanding, for the items to get into the Frag Mighty, get to the root. After that timeframe, the design is to come through and actually cut the Frag Mities and grind them right down to the dirt and open up the ditch lines, so that we actually have open water flow. Keep in mind, Frag Mities, locking up the ditches, as we've all seen, the flooding is horrendous. With ClearLeaves, and if we do this consistently for the next few years, I'm sure that we're gonna get to a position where Chesterfield, Ray Township, Lenox Township all match and allow the flow of the water to get back to Lake St. Clair like it's designed. So with that, I'm gonna bring it forward back to the Board, we're asking for an additional $2,000 to make our match $12,000 instead of $10,000. And if the Board has any questions, I would invite Amanda to come forward and open it up for your questions.
If there are no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the expansion of the cost rate agreement with Six Rivers Land Insurgency and Macomb County Right-of-Way Treatment Program to treat the Frag Mities in the right of way for the township at the cause not to exceed $12,000.
Second.
I have motion by the Chair, seconded by Treasurer Hahnle, may the Deputy Court Please Call the Role?
Reader?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right, moving on, Property Owner Variance Request, Mr. Freibau, and I understand we also have the property owner here as well.
All right, this evening, we do have a request from the property owner of, and excuse me, I'm sorry to have it in my hand, Mr. Paul Palazoa, located at 6546 Frost Road. These items have been brought forward, we've worked with the DPW Supervisor, we've looked at engineering. They are following the guidelines set by the township and the recommendations. Part of those guidelines are very clear of the items that we utilize and require. This evening, Mr. Palazoa, through his attorney, is coming forward asking for a variance in the water lines. Keep in mind, as they'll explain to you, these, the property footage from the actual structure of the home all the way to the road is an excessive amount of footage. Our guidelines are clear, they show that we must use copper, it's recommended or required. Mr. Palazoa and his attorney are coming forward asking the Board for leniency to get approval from the Board this evening to use a poly water line instead of copper. Now, it's been advised, Mr. Palazoa and his attorney, that these items, you become responsible for that. It's your choice to make that item poly. We've looked at these, there are some, you know, issues, but there's nothing that's clear in any health risk or items such as those items for the water lines. We just look at the connections and we look at all the items that we have in our ordinance and recommendation. This is being brought back to the Board, asking the Board to consider a variance from Mr. Palazoa. With that, I'll open it up to Mr. Palazoa and his attorney. Any questions?
May I please assign a Board? My name is Dean Waller, and I'm representing Mr. Palazoa. I'll make this brief, Mr. Palazoa is in process of constructing residents at 60546 Frost Road. The problem with the copper requirement, it's approximately almost $50,000 extra more for doing that. That we are asking the approval from the Board to allow him to use poly water line, which, which the state, is used throughout the state. We're requesting that, and it was brought to my attention by the Township Attorney that there might be a possibility that he had some concerns and wanted to have some type of whole harmless agreement in regards to that. Mr. Palazoa has no problem doing that at all.
All right, are there any, are there any questions? See, none. I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Paul Palazoa to use poly material for the water line instead of copper, constructing this home at 60546 Frost Road, as long as Mr. Palazoa agrees in writing to hold the township harmless and indemnify the township if anything should fail because of the use of poly water line.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, seconded by Clerk Lawson, may the Deputy Court Please Call the Role?
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Item H, Election Laptop Purchase Request, Madam Corbin?
The laptops that we have been using for elections in the four precincts are becoming too old and are not functioning up to the required standards set by the state. In the last two elections, we have had to use our greeting app laptops instead in the precincts, but for larger elections, we will need all of our laptops to be operational. The election department is requesting four new laptops to be used for elections. I have attached three quotes for your review, but I am recommending the quote from High Tech for four laptops for $3,566.
I will make a motion to approve the purchase of four Hewlett Packard Prolox G10 15.6-inch laptops from High Tech at the cost of $879 each, totaling $3,516 for use at elections.
Second.
I have motion by Treasurer Hahnle, supported by Trustee Corbin, may the Deputy Court Please Call the Role?
Hahnle?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, Item I, Township Office Computer Purchase Proposal, Madam Corbin?
Every year, we make an effort to replace some of our computers in order to ensure that all of our computers in the building are covered by warranty. We also need the computers to be, to have the ability to upgrade to Windows 11 because Windows 10 will be discontinued by October 2025. The warranty period is five years, and we currently have around 35 computers. If we buy seven computers each year, it will ensure that all of our computers will be replaced within the five years. I also have attached three quotes for your review, but I am recommending approval from the quote, for the quote from High Tech for seven desktop computers for $6,12.50. That includes shipping, by the way, my total.
Motion to approve the purchase of seven computers for the Township offices from High Tech at the cost of $837.50 each totaling $6,012.50.
Second.
I have motion by Treasurer Hahnle, supported by Trustee Gurley, may the Deputy Court Please Call the Role?
Hahnle?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye. All right, Item J, Board and Microphone Replacement, Mr. Freibau?
All right, good evening again, Board. Just for the public's information, it seems like we go through a lot of things throughout the year, but there's a lot of equipment that starts to come up in time. We've actually got equipment that we're utilizing right now that for this first time in quite a while is actually working correctly. So even though we're requesting this evening an audio recording incurred microphones to be replaced due to the signs of deterioration, as you hear, this will come and go, and it's not clear throughout the group, nor is the Board's clarity very clear. So we are considering replacement of the current system. The Supervisor's Office has searched extensively to find a system that'll be able to integrate into our current speaker system and work correctly. Both High Tech, both High, I can project, well, there we go, I can predict, both High Tech and Able Electronics were contacted for quotes on the system. Both Able and High Tech have returned a quote for the same system, but at different prices. The Telvax Conference System, which both are recommending, would include audio recording software and would allow any employee in the office to be able to access the audio recordings and through the nine wireless microphones with rechargeable batteries. High Tech submitted the lowest quote for the system at a total of $19,750.56. This item has fact, has been in fact budgeted into our current budget due to the failing of the infrastructure that we had seen coming forth. At this evening's Board meeting, we are requesting the approval of the purchase and installation of the Telvax Conference System via High Tech at the cost of a total of $19,750.56.
Motion to approve the purchase of the Telvax Conference System with nine replacement microphones for the meeting room from High Tech at the cost of $19,750.56.
I'll support, I have a motion by Treasurer Hahnle, supported by the Chair, may the Deputy Court Please Call the Role?
Hahnle?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right, Item K, New Vehicle Improvement Proposal, Mr. Freibau?
Good evening, Board. For some time now, we've had several requests from the employees who utilize the currently 16-year-old Ford Escape to replace it. After reviewing the vehicle, reviewing repairs, it's time to go ahead and move this thing along and retire it. The Supervisor's Office has went out and purch, or, excuse me, went out and researched the replacement. I know what this sounds like, doesn't, but the best vehicle to replace that particular unit, which is a four-by-four vehicle, was a determined to be a Ford Bronco Sport, which would be the best option while remaining economical. While a total of $60,000 was set aside in the new budget for this vehicle, the three quotes that we have received from local dealers are literally a little over half of that budget, which was phenomenal, based upon today's prices of vehicles. The following quotes were submitted from the following four dealerships. Fred Grande, $33,480.90. Russ Milney, $33,374. Suburban Ford of Romeo, $38,221.16. Due to the previous township history with Fred Grande Ford and the closeness of the proximity of the service-related items, if any, the Supervisor's Office is proposing the purchase of Ford Bronco Sport from Fred Grande Ford at a total of $33,480.90.
Mr. Freibau, those were apples to apples as far as the features on the, on the vehicles.
You're correctly stated, Mr. Clifford, they were exact same vehicles that Mr. Reader had sent in and requested. Which was amazing to look at the numbers, because as you and I both know, dealerships are pretty right on the spot, so it was kind of interesting to see a $5,000 change. And the Fred Grande recommendation was due to the fact that they're literally up the street.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Any other questions, or they have the answer?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the Ford Bronco Sport from Fred Grande Ford at the cost of $33,480.90, as proposed by Supervisor Reader.
I'll say more sense, I have a motion by Treasurer Hahnle, supported by the Chair, may the Deputy Court Please Call the Role?
Hahnle?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All righty, moving on to Item L, the hot ticket of the, not even guess, the Off-Road Vehicle Ordinance Proposal, Mr. Freibau?
Supervisor Reader, after receiving numerous calls and numerous interactions, the Supervisor's Office and Supervisor Reader received from the residents and the concerns and the questions, it's happy this evening to bring this ordinance in front of the Board requesting approval. As many residents this evening stated that this was a mirror image ordinance. And speaking to our law enforcement side, this is also a mirror image ordinance coming off of St. Clair County. Those items that are coming through, this is an ordinance that doesn't seem to be an issue for us to bring on board. We do understand the concerns, the issues. We also highly request that, you know, the, the folks that this comes to play with, that they review and understand this ordinance. This doesn't allow 14-year-olds to drive by themselves unless the registered ticket information, and I believe in talking to the Sheriff's Department, there's different types of ORV stickers and so on. So it's compliance with the ordinance, we have no problem based upon what we've seen. We've been able to push that out to the residents, we've gotten good feedback, we've gotten decent feedback across the Board. So this evening, it's our pleasure from the Supervisor's Office to recommend a request to approve this ordinance. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board.
If there are no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the Off-Road Vehicle Ordinance being Chapter 416.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, supported by Trustee Gurley, may the Deputy Court Please Call the Role?
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Item M, Noise Or, sorry, Noise Control Ordinance Proposal, Mr. Freibau?
Thank you, Supervisor Reader. With that, as we continue to move forward with a number of things, this evening, we're also bringing forward to the Board for a recommendation on the Noise Control Ordinance Update. Currently in our program, we have a noise ordinance that requires a decimal meter. If the Sheriff's Department gets a complaint, they gotta come back, they gotta get the decimal meter, they gotta go out. There's a lot of things involved into the noise ordinance issue. This is kind of opening the door for our law enforcement to say, you know what? Common sense says that is too loud. Turn it down, stop what you're doing. This is impairing our public, our residents. It's egregious. Those are the things, you know, when we look at that, you're out there at midnight with fireworks out of season, music going off. These are things that law enforcement can go ahead and enforce without coming back and getting the meter. This is a common sense update to the noise ordinance. With that, as you see, it's attached to your program and your board packet. If there's any questions specifically, I'd be more than happy to go into those. But with that, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments, or entertaining motion. Just so that it's very clear, writing a paragraph in Section fourteen-seven, fourteen, forty-one, four-one-seven point two, excuse me, the numbers have been a little crazy today. It's very clear the hours between eleven PM and seven AM shall be designated as a quiet time.
I will make a motion to approve the noise control ordinance, Chapter four-seventeen, as recommended by Supervisor's Office.
Can I have a question here? Is this, is this gonna be a, I know when I bring this up, we have a consent judgment with a certain entity in the township. This will not affect anything in that consent judgment as far as noise after eleven o'clock.
Correct, the consent judgment would supersede any ordinance that we have on the books.
Correct.
Just making that clear, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, no, this does not have anything to do with that particular thing. Hopefully, you know.
I mean, that particular consent judgment goes usually till midnight.
Correct. And Mr. Clifford, just to clarify, this is, this is the parties that are going on?
Well, I get it.
At law enforcement, yeah.
Mr. Graymount, I get it.
You got, you're right.
But you do have a business there that does that, and our attorney's here, and I'm sure he'd clear it up for me. But yeah, it's, that's fine.
I have a motion by Court Lawson, is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Court Lawson, second by Treasurer Holland, may the Deputy Court, please call the roll?
Lawson?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
All right, Item N, November ballot proposal, Mr. Graymount?
Good evening, Board. This evening, the, excuse me, recommendation is coming out of the information that we've been able to obtain. Lennox Township has hit a population threshold of well over five thousand or more, and having over three thousand registered electors. Under MCL Section forty-one point seven zero, the voters of Lennox Township are able to expand the Board of Trustees from its current composition to the supervisor clerk treasurer and up to four trustees. This composition is not to be confused with becoming a charter township. That is separate process, and we are currently not proposing. If the board approves the proposed ballot measure, it will appear on the November ballot. And if approved by the voters, two additional trustees will be elected in the 2026 general cycle, general election cycle. The proposed ballot language is as follows. Should Lennox Township add two additional trustee positions to the township board to be elected in the 2026 general election cycle? Yes or no answer? The supervisor's office is recommending approval of the ballot measure for the November election, and the proposed ballot language has forsaken. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comments. So just under basic information, Lennox Township is still a general law township, but you now would have a total of seven on the board instead of five. Give us for a wider voice and a wider speech.
Mr. Graymount, in this, would this be something, and I guess I'm directing this towards the attorney, would this in any way have to be approved by the general electors?
Let me get the microphone. Almost be retired, isn't it? Once you reach the population level, this can be passed at the board level as the law is written. I'm not gonna ask you to research whether it has to be voted on by the populace. I don't believe it does, I believe the board has the power to do this. If I'm wrong on that, I will inform this board immediately. I'm just asking, I can barely hear you. No, it's time.
Can you get that a little closer?
All right. Once you reach the population, the board can vote for this ballot proposal. Obviously, the ballot proposal has to pass before you can do it. You follow that? That's what they're asking, a ballot proposal on which the people vote. To put the ballot proposal on, the board has the authority to do that.
I have a question. So if it goes on the 2026 general election cycle, will those two trustees be changed over after two years? And it goes to four with the rest of the board?
Yes.
So people that are elected in '26 will be served two years and then have to go for reelection in '28?
Yes, the law dictates that. What cycle that we're on, township offices are on the presidential election cycle. The law also dictates if this ballot measure is approved, it goes to the next general election cycle that is available. So this would be the...
So there'd be a one-time, two-year term?
Yes.
Correct.
It'd be a partial term.
Well, yeah, but then from then, whoever was elected will continue on a four-year.
Correct. Well, I also have been in contact with the county clerk's office. This will cost us nothing to put it on the ballot, not a single penny. I personally feel that it should come to the decision of the people, let the people of Lennox Township decide how they want their board. They want a five-person or a seven-person.
I have no questions.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the ballot proposal to add two trustees to the Board of Trustees on the November fifth, 2024 ballot, as proposed.
I'll second.
I have a motion by the Chair, second by Treasurer Holland, may the Deputy Court, please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
All right, Item O, art, private individual thermal imaging camera purchase request, Mr. White?
So with the new budget year, all of the items that we had here before, you were budgeted for within the budget. We just have to go through the process, the formal process now, allowing the board the opportunity to approve, or in fact deny them if they were to choose to do so. The, so we can just, you'll probably need motions for each one separately?
Yeah, they're each individual part handles.
So the first is individual small thermal imaging cameras. These are simply cameras used in the past. We've had just big thermal imaging cameras in the fire department. These provide each, these will provide enough of these cameras. So each firefighter that would be going inside the house, inside the fire situation, would have thermal imaging capability, as opposed to only one or two of them potentially having it. And certainly, that can help not only when you're trying to suppress the actual fire, but when you're in a situation where you might be searching for a child or adult who might be entrapped in the building. So we are recommending the twelve individual small cameras for what would be the interior attack teams at a cost of eleven thousand, seven hundred, forty-two dollars. And twenty-four cents.
If there are no questions, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, no.
Go ahead, I'm done. Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the twelve individual thermal imaging cameras to be worn on turnout gear for municipal emergency services at the cost of eleven thousand, seven hundred, forty-two dollars and twenty-four cents, as recommended by Public Safety Director White.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, second by Court Lawson, may the Deputy Court, please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
And there are times that we still do need a larger camera. Sometimes this can involve situations involving fires. It's often operated by the incident commander or operations commander at the scene to see things the small cameras may not see. It can also be used for things like when we get nighttime rescue situations. They actually work pretty well if we're looking for a lost person, lost soul, somebody who's walked away from their car during an accident, things of those natures. So the large cameras work better in that situation. The large camera we currently have was bought with our 1989 fire department. So it's served us well, and this replaces that unit at a cost of three thousand, eight hundred, eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Also from MES, or Municipal Emergency Services.
If there are no questions from the board, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the attack throw camera with batteries, battery charger, truck charger, and gear keeper carbine for the fire department from municipal emergency services at the cost of three thousand, eight hundred, eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, second by Trustee Curly, may the Deputy Court, please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right.
The next item is what do we call it, piercing nozzle? Currently, these are nozzles that are somewhat newer to the fire service, but basically, it allows firefighters to take the nozzle, basically push it through a wall, and then actually put water in that way. There's situations where, you know, if we don't have people in a building, it's a way to be able to just keep our firefighters safer by being able to use this nozzle to attack the fire as opposed to sending in human capital, if you will, into otherwise dangerous situations. The cost is seventeen hundred dollars, and it is from McQueen.
If there are no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the transformer piercing nozzle at the cost of one thousand, seven hundred dollars for the fire department from McQueen Group at the recommendation of Public Safety Director White.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, second by Trustee Curly, may the Deputy Court, please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
The next item is the purchase of seventeen eight-hundred megahertz pagers. There's our microphone again. Seventeen eight-hundred megahertz pagers. These eight-hundred megahertz pagers allow us to do something that the current paging system does not. And we had a really close call this year, and our firefighter safety is probably my, that and the public are my number one responsibilities. And the current page that we have, they page out, they tell us where the call is, they tell us what the situation is with the call. For instance, the person's having a heart attack, just as a, for instance. Then they stop, and we get no more information as we respond to scenes. Because we have a volunteer fire department, and if somebody lives out near Omo Road, you know, they live out that way, and their neighbor calls and needs help, the firefighter can go right to their home. The problem with that is we had an incident this year, and we've had a couple others over time, where the firefighter went to the incident thinking it was a heart attack, and when they entered the residence, found out it was a violent crime scene and something that we wouldn't normally enter without, you know, our law enforcement officers there before us. But because they could not hear that radio traffic on the current paging system, they went in. Seventeen thousand dollars is a small price, or, I'm sorry. Fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars is a pretty small price to pay for the safety of our firefighters. So I'm recommending we buy seventeen of these devices for our current fire service. Currently, we have about nineteen active people on the fire department, but our fire officers carry an actual radio with them versus just a listening device. So they have that ability to hear, if you will, the continuing conversation that might be going on on the way to the site.
Mr. White, did it, were any other quotes got on something that large?
Were any other quotes received? These eight-hundred megahertz pagers, because everything is, the state controls the eight-hundred megahertz radio system, so we only have a single vendor for this.
Oh, I gotcha.
For this, it's kind of like our radios. We have a single source vendor, because when the state put up this, what they call the eight-hundred megahertz system for emergency services statewide, that was almost twenty years ago now, they, you know, they control all of that. So you don't get any better or worse price, no matter who you go to.
I will make a motion to approve the purchase of seventeen G4P25 voice pagers, dual-band with a three-year extended warranty from Digicom Global at the cost of fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents, as proposed by Public Safety Director Jeff White.
Second.
I have a motion by Court Lawson, second by Treasurer Holland, may the Deputy Court, please call the roll?
Lawson?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Now, the last item was kind of added as an emergent need. The board is welcome to put this off a meeting if they'd like to, if they'd like any more information on it. But basically, what happened is this, we have airlifting bags. There's some photos for the board, but, you know, you may have seen these on TV. It's when we put these giant inflatable bags onto something to lift something heavy, whether it's a piece of farm equipment, a car, a part of a semi, or somebody who gets entrapped. Our system, I think, was about fifteen years old. We tested it just recently and found it had holes in it. They just get that way over time and basically dry rot it for all intents and purposes. And Assistant Chief Trobley, who's also with our DVW, had pointed out the need to replace this quickly. We had placed in the budget a different kind of vent fan for fighting fires. Our vent fans work. We think this, what we were gonna place in there, you know, kind of as we did budgeting this year, was a little better option. In talking with both Chief Hartway and Assistant Chief Trobley, they both felt like we could move the vent fan off until next year's budget and use the about fifty-five hundred dollars that we had set aside for the vent fan for this as kind of our critical need right now. So that's what we're gonna do internally if the board approves it. The cost for the replacement unit was four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. That did not include shipping. So if the board was gonna approve it, either approve it with a, you know, I put a not to exceed fifty-five hundred, or just put forty-nine, forty-five, plus whatever shipping is for it. And I, we won't know exactly what that is.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the rescue airbag system at a cost not to exceed five thousand, five hundred dollars plus shipping, as recommended by Public Safety Director White.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, second by Treasurer Holland, may the Deputy Court, please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Thank you all. Mr. Supervisor, if I may, with the public that we have here tonight, they just heard us spend an awful lot of money, so I think they're owed a bit of an explanation. And the explanation I wanna make to them is this, our fire department is amazing. It's amazing because it's run by mostly part paid men and women. That's kept our costs down tremendously and allowed us to have probably some of the best equipment in the entire county. The fire mileage in this community has been three mil since before my time, and it's remained three mils, and as far as I'm concerned, will remain three mils as long as I'm in this role. That still puts us in such a position that we're able to buy that important, essential equipment we need. And within the next sixty days, I'll be coming forward to the board to purchase a new fire truck. That fire truck will be in the neighborhood of one point two million dollars. It will cost... It will cost, it, it will take about three and a half years to build, and currently, we would have enough money to pay cash and still have money in the bank for that truck. And that just speaks to kind of the conservative nature of what we do with the department, trying to do everything we can to use equipment for fifteen years at a time, to keep costs down and, and be able to do those things without increasing the burden on our taxpayers. So thank you for letting me mention that. The only other thing I mentioned is, you know, we all have looked at the, we, we all looked to at the Off-Road Vehicle Ordinance. I asked our sheriff's official to look at it. None of us had concerns with regards to what the Board proposed tonight. The, the one thing I did wanna mention, just if you, if you really read every line of the ordinance, and I encourage everybody to do that, is it does take effect thirty days from now. So that's kind of a state law thing, the township has to publish it. So from whenever that publication goes, that's when it takes effect. So I didn't want somebody to run home tonight, you know, celebrate on their ATV and inadvertently get a ticket for, for doing that, that's all. So, so enjoy your ATVs, you know, that's, that's why we all want to live in the country, right? So thank you. Thank you, sir. And, Lord.
All right. Moving on to public comment. All right, if anyone wishes to speak, there is a three-minute limit. Go once. All right, moving on. Call from the Board. Seeing none. Close session to discuss confidential attorney-client information with the Township Attorney.
I make a motion, we go into closed session at seven forty-two.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, seconded by Treasurer Hahnold. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, closed session. I'll make a motion to enter, oh, how about that? I'll make a motion to enter into open session at eight PM.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, seconded by Trustee Gurley. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye. Hahnold?
I will make a motion to authorize the Township Attorney to proceed as discussed in closed session.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, seconded by Trustee Gurley. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, moving on to adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn at eight oh-two.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Hahnold, supported by Trustee Clifford. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.